Good evening and welcome to the first city council meeting of 2022. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart. Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zepone. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and special welcome to our new council members, Jonathan Bingle and Zach Zepone. Welcome to you all, and congratulations to Councilmember Wilkerson for being elected this time to us. And so we have a new council, and we have some new staff members, and we're excited to do the people's work this year. We're going to start off with a proclamation regarding slavery and human trafficking. Councilmember Stratton is going to read that, and we're joined by Malini Goodman. Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you. Whereas human trafficking for the purposes of forced labor or sexual exploitation is the third largest crime industry in the world, it is a public health issue that impacts individuals, families, and communities, and traffickers disproportionately target at-risk populations, including individuals who have experienced or been exposed to other forms of violence, such as child abuse and maltreatment, interpersonal violence and sexual assault, community and gang violence, and individuals disconnected from stable support networks, youth who have run away or who are homeless, unaccompanied minors, persons displaced during natural disasters. And whereas human trafficking is a violation of human rights by involving force, coercion, and/or fraud, or in which the victim is under 18 years of age, and is unbiased when it comes to its victims survivors, including but not limited to all ages, gender, identities, race, religion, social classes. And whereas the Inland Northwest Human Trafficking Task Force has been working for over a decade to better inform, educate, and engage our community members, who members to best support those who seek help, and their intention is to collaboratively use a trauma-informed approach and create low-barrier services through prevention and intervention, advocacy, empowerment, and healing. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Spokane, and January 11th as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day, and encourage all of our citizens to start by believing and to become informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all of its forms in our community. And I will turn it over to Maylin for some comments.
Good evening. My name's Melanie. I'm a victim advocate at Lutheran Community Services Northwest, and as the only community-based sexual assault center in the Spokane area and the largest crime victim service center, we really appreciate this proclamation being signed tonight. January is Human Trafficking and Slavery Prevention and Awareness Month, and we believe that human trafficking can be understood on the continuum of oppression and sexual violence, and that it is imperative that we focus on awareness and education, not just in the month of January, but throughout the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie, for joining us and for all the work your organization does. We will stand with you for the entire year. Thank you so much. Next, we have quite a few reappointments to boards and commissions. Ms. Pfister.
Reappointment of Dr. Kevin Oldenburg to a four-year term on the Board of Directors of the Health Sciences and Services Authority for Spokane County to serve from December 1, 2021, to November 30, 2025. Reappoint Grant Keller to a three-year term on the Design Review Board to serve in the developer position from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2024. Reappointment of Chuck Horgan and Katie Patterson Larson to a three-year term on the Arts Commission to serve from March 27, 2021, to December 31, 2024. And reappointment of Madison Bush to a three-year term to serve from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2024. Reappointment of James Rand to a three-year term on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to serve from December 15, 2021, to December 14, 2024. Reappointment of Greg Francis to a four-year term on the Plan Commission to serve from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2025. And reappointment of Sylvia Tarman, Amanda Paulson, Austin Dickey, and Ray Rass to a three-year term on the City-County Historic Landmarks Commission to serve from January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2024.
All right. All those in favor of these reappointments, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you, all of you who are re-upping and have been reappointed. We really appreciate your service. It makes a huge difference to us. For those of you who might be watching and are interested in exploring service on a city board or commission, you can visit the boards or commission's webpage at the city website, myspokane, and the mayor's office accepts applications and does interviews, and then the city council makes final confirmation. There are lists on the webpage of what all boards or commissions are and what openings there are. So thank you. All right. With that, let's turn to our legislative agenda.
Special Budget Ordnance C 36163, amending ordinance number C 36161, passed by the City Council December 13, 2021, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to various funds of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing, it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency and appropriating funds in American Rescue Plan Fund. Number one, increase appropriation by $13,665,000. A, $6 million for affordable housing projects in the city. B, $2 million for down payment assistance program for first-time homeowners with incomes below 80% of average medium income. C, $1 million for sub-area planning to increase housing along transportation corridors. D, $300,000 for an eviction, legal defense, and education program in the city. E, $1 million for funding to childcare providers. F, $1 million for employment support in the arts. G, $1,120,000 for play equipment and bathroom upgrades in city parks, prioritizing parks located in the lowest-income census tracts. H, $400,000 for a construction pre-apprenticeship educational program targeted towards individuals involved in or at risk of being involved in the criminal justice system. I, $300,000 for an equity navigator service to aid the city in ensuring that funds spent will serve our diverse and historically underserved communities to be spent before December 31, 2024. J, $305,000 for internal financial personnel to be used for the administration and execution of the city's direct aid share of the American Rescue Plan Act funding to be spent before December 31, 2024. K, $120,000 for services to be rendered from an outside firm to ensure the city is approving appropriately eligible projects, programs within the guidance set forth by the U.S. Department of Treasury to be spent before December 31, 2024. L, $120,000 solely for community engagement and project coordinator personnel to assist council and administration in the American Recovery Plan Act spending. This action arises from the need to provide appropriation authority for first-out funding, supporting housing, employment, and COVID-19 safe community administration support.
Thank you. And just by way of an update, this afternoon, we substituted this slightly because we hadn't realized when we put this together that we had already allocated $380,000 for replacing park play equipment in lower-income neighborhoods, so we adjusted that, which lowered the overall amount for Section G by 380,000, and thus the total amount. So it's just at $13,665,000 now, from what it was published earlier, if you saw that published before. And again, this consists of two different types of funding. The most important is what we're calling the early outs, and so those are substantive projects for housing and childcare and retraining and small business and employee support. This, the money, just so that people know, is still needs to be subject to requests for proposals, and the administration and the council and community members will be working on those. RFP will come back to council for approval, and then we'll go out for RFP, and then final contracts will be awarded through the RFP process and approved by council. There's a second category of topics here, which I'm calling ARP infrastructure. It's to help us administer the ARP funds. It includes an extra employee in the administration's finance department. It funds community outreach and project coordination, and it also funds an outside accounting firm to help us on eligibility, to make sure that we're only funding eligible projects under the Act. And also, an innovative idea for equity navigators to help stand up a network to help the city and our RFP vendors reach out to communities that have been denied participation in the past to government assistance, whether it be an obstacle of language or income, education, culture, even geography. So there are two different kinds of proposals. This, obviously, we have a total of $80 million to allocate, so this is just a start on that, and we will continue our process of bringing proposals to council study sessions, getting feedback from them, and then taking it to the administration for their feedback and ideas on implementation. So that process will continue. We have, I believe, three people signed up to testify on this. Nagmana Shirazi, Julie Honikamp, Deb Elzinga. Julie's going to be joining us in a minute by video, our first meeting where we're figuring out how to allow video testimony in addition to phone testimony. But the first person I'm going to call is Nagmana Shirazi. If you, oh. All right. I'll go to Deb Elzinga, star three. Do you want to hit star three, Deb?
You ready?
Yes. Welcome to city council. Deb, you have up to three minutes.
Great. Thank you. Well, I am Deb Elzinga, and I'm the CEO at Community Frameworks. And I want to start by saying welcome to our newest council members, Zepone and Bingle, and I look forward to working with both of you. I would suggest that COVID and the recent frigid temperatures have reminded all of us of the importance of home. And right now, city and county leaders have a unique opportunity to deploy $6 million in ARP funds to fill funding gaps for a number of critical projects here in Spokane County. I think the high demand for affordable housing underscores the need for funding the list of proposed projects. For example, at Community Frameworks, we are currently leasing up our latest development, Cento Commons, here in Spokane. And I want to tell you that in just a matter of one week, we had over 150 applications for just 46 apartments. People who live in affordable housing include the people we see struggling to survive on the streets, but also include people who work in the service industry, for example, and other low-wage jobs. Simply put, affordable housing means that people have a place to call home that allows them to live within their means. And I think we can all agree that when that happens, people can focus on the other aspects of their lives. Two days before Christmas, our organization, Community Frameworks, moved in five households into Highland Village out in Airway Heights. As you can imagine, our new residents were thrilled to get their keys. And these are people who, some of whom were without a home, some of them living in RVs, and some of them living in very, very old mobile homes. One of the couples was living in a mobile home with no working furnace, heating their home with two fake fireplaces, and another resident was living in an RV and had to move out because the plumbing stopped working. Now, these are good, decent folks who would just have had unfortunate circumstances. But I can also tell you that things start to change for the better when people have a place to call home. I heard one father of a three-year-old talk about how his son would now have the chance to grow and thrive because of their new home. And I saw the tears of happiness of one of our new residents when she was signing the final paperwork. And I actually felt the hope and dignity people have because they now have a wonderful place to call home. So I urge city council members to approve the request to use ARP funds to increase affordable housing in Spokane, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you so much, Deb. We're working on getting Nagmana on the phone. You want to go ahead and try Julie while she's? All right. Julie Honikamp, welcome to city council. Like I said, you're going to be the first person that we've been able to use to testify remotely by video. So welcome. You have up to three minutes. Oh, we can't hear you. Just a sec.
There we go.
Yes. Now we can hear you.
Looking a little yellow today, so forgive the color. But good evening, council president, members of council, and I also like to welcome our new council members as well. It's great to have you with us. So my name is Julie Honikamp, and I am the CEO of Spokane Neighborhood Action Partners, also known as SNAP in our community, as well as SNAP Financial Access, who helps small-business folks and folks trying to purchase homes as well. So I wanted to begin by commending you on really a thoughtful and inclusive way to have thought feedback on these American Rescue Plan dollars. I think when I looked at the website and I thought about kind of replenishment and reaching out, resilience and relief, I thought that was very strategic and thoughtful. So great job. Your continued focus on historically underserved and disproportionately impacted communities is very important, and that relief should be prioritized to those most in need. And so while SNAP serves over 40,000 community members through 30 programs each year, including energy assistance, small-business lending, weatherization, transportation, and homeless services, I'm actually here to talk to you this evening about affordable housing. And I wanted to specifically acknowledge that, like Deb, if anything, COVID has just really driven home the fragility of life. So whether it's the loss of income and employment, or family and friends, growing mental health, substance abuse impacts, all are significantly more challenging without a roof over your head. I was thinking about this earlier, about just the simple act of washing your hands in hot water or a place to lay down when you're not feeling well and to socially distance. Housing is health. A home is a basic need we all share. I know you're all aware of all many factors and reasons why we got to kind of our housing crisis. So it's the multi-year waiting list for vouchers, or high vacancy rates, soaring housing costs, and the thousands of units that we believe are needed in order to meet the need. I also know that housing really falls along a continuum, right? Everything from sheltering our houseless all the way through to homeownership. I also know that there's a whole suite of other things that go with housing besides just brick and mortar, right? So things like weatherization and rehabilitation, minor home repair, down payment assistance, rental assistance, code enforcement, land bank strategies, transportation. It's not just the brick and mortar. It's a whole spectrum of things we need in order to make a comprehensive affordable housing plan. And I have to say, I'm also really pleased to see some upstream strategies around eviction prevention and legal defense. So I know time is running short, but I just want to thank you for prioritizing affordable housing. Very important, and I stand with the city on the use of these dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you for your work. We do, we had some challenges getting Nagmana in, but she is in. So if you want to hit star three, Nagmana? Oh, you're on video. Sorry. I see you. Well, welcome to city council, Nagmana. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me now?
We can't hear you very well, so I don't know if you can speak louder.
Of course. Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Nagmana Shirazi, and I work with the Spokane Low-Income Housing Consortium, or Flic for the acronym. Thank you for the opportunity to share how important and crucial it is, the need in our city to create more low-income housing. I would like to begin by thanking our outgoing council members, Burke and Mom, for their leadership and service to our city, and welcome new council members, Bingle and Zepone. Congrats also to Councilmember Wilkerson on your reelection. I look to your combined leadership in the coming year. Spokane is over 7,000 low-income places short. This all started in the mid-'70s when low-income federal housing funding was cut by 75%. We have never made this up, and the issue has built and built and built until we are now at a crisis. The lack of low-income housing in Spokane did not happen overnight. Back in 1995, the city recognized this and put a levy on the ballot to raise local dollars. We at Flic applaud the council for passing HB 1590, which is the local housing levy, in 2020. Every city that has successfully addressed homelessness did it by starting with low-income housing. For instance, Salt Lake City, Houston, and San Diego all built thousands of new places for people to live. However, this is not just about homelessness. People working full-time at minimum wage also qualify for low-income housing. Currently, there is nothing available. Our population is aging, yet Spokane is not ready. So we have very little senior low-income housing available. This is crucial to address as, number one, a lot of them have been living in their current residences since the last 15 to 20 years and do not have the means to fund the increase in rent of almost 30% as of last year. They're being priced out without any place to relocate to locally. Oftentimes, they cut back on essentials like food and medicine to be able to make their rent. This is truly unacceptable. I personally know and have spoken with several people who are facing this situation, and it is our responsibility to ensure that they are taken care of and do not end up falling into the cracks. With this in mind, I particularly would like to thank the council and Council President Beggs for moving forward by allocating a portion of the ARPA funds to offset the urgent need around creating low-income housing and making this the largest recommendation. These ARPA dollars, combined with HB 1590, will finish off multiple projects, and I would like to take, and I would like to urge council to approve these funds at the earliest. I would also like to invite all council members to join Flic monthly meetings, which are held every third Wednesday. I particularly appreciate Melissa Morrison from council, as she attends most of them. You can reach me at nagmana@flic.org for more information. Thank you for the time, thank you for taking the time to hear about the importance of why we are advocating making low-income housing a priority use of the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is the extent of community comment on this special budget ordinance. I'll open it up to council members for any commentary. Councilmember Cathcart.
Does my audio work this time?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So obviously, I feel like another week with another touch would be great, but we are where we are. And so, you know, broad strokes, I think what's on the list are generally things I support. You know, I think where my concerns or where my interests really are is going to be more in the weeds of, within these broad strokes, how the dollars are allocated and spent. And so, for example, $6 million for affordable housing projects in the city, obviously really, really important, but, you know, what percentage of that might be something that's focused on homeownership or land banking? As Julie pointed out, obviously, issues with weatherization and maybe updating HVACs. Remember during the summer when we had our crisis for a few days with regards to the heat? And part of the problem was a lot of people had outdated HVACs that couldn't keep up and then was weighing down the system. So could any of this be going for that? Down payment assistance, you know, how is it going to be operated? A million for sub-area planning. I think I've been one of the loudest voices pushing for planning dollars out of ARP. And so just making sure that, you know, how this money is spent, you know, along transportation corridors, which is important and good, but obviously, that's a little bit more emphasis on the rental side than the homeownership side. So are there some things we can think about in terms of trying to improve both pieces? Eviction, legal defense, you know, I want to make sure that we're supporting both tenants who are struggling as well as those really small landlords. Anyway, I can go on and on throughout this, but to me, and, you know, things even like the Equity Navigator Service, to me, it's just good governance to make sure that we're talking to every community within Spokane and making sure that they all have a voice and are able to participate in the process. And so, I mean, there's a lot in here I support. I am going to support the overall SBO tonight, but I am, I think, going to be hawk-eyed when it comes to the RFPs and really try to make sure that we're doing the best we can within those RFPs to, you know, provide the best bang for the buck, the best service we can. And I do have a number of other things that I think are really important that we need to prioritize for ARP dollars that I've submitted. Some, I think, some others have submitted. And so I really look forward to the discussion and the ability for us to consider those in the next round. So thank you.
Councilmember Bingo.
Thank you, Council President. I echo a lot of what Councilman Cathcart just said. There's a lot of vagueness in a lot of the verbiage here. Some of the questions that I have that I was also hoping to get a deferral for this was just because we came up with, we have dollar amounts here. And when we asked about, how did we come to those dollar amounts? Sometimes it felt like it was just, oh, we felt like this amount needed to go, rather than, you know, these organizations have told us we need this much money. And for those reasons, that's why I have some hesitancy to go along with our approval today just because while we're going to determine what specifically it goes to, we're kind of also already determining what specifically it's going to by saying, a million dollars is going to be spent towards this idea. Two million is going to be spent towards this. And so I think I also intend to support the SBO today, but I wish that we could have deferred it just so a couple of big questions get an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Tonight, we're letting the community know initially where our focus is in these dollars. We have been asked, what are you doing with the money? You've had it for nine months. So this lets them know that, yes, we are supporting housing. It's $6 million now, but as we go along, it may increase. Also around the arts, we know that there's been high unemployment. They need the help. We know with the Equity Navigators, yes, our infrastructure and city halls should already have that, but it does not. So we are setting up this structure, hopefully to continue after ARPA dollars. And the list goes on and on. So again, we're giving these amounts. We're letting folks know where we're at. We'll be working on the RFPs. They will come before council. We will continue to be as transparent about what the community says and how decisions are made.
Councilmember Stratton.
Yeah, I just got to say this. I am so proud of this group tonight. It's our first meeting of 2022. We have two new council members joining us or with us. We've had a lot of discussion about this today, and I am so proud of every single one of us that stopped and talked to each other and tried to get a feel where everybody was at, knowing that there was a little bit of angst behind some of this because of information that we didn't have. But we've all come together because I think we all agree that the community is important. It's good that we've come together to say, let's move on to the next step. We'll get into the details then. But I'm really proud of us because I think it shows that we have that bigger picture in mind, and it's our constituents and the community. We've had our discussions. We've had our differences, but here we sit. We're going to move this forward, and then the devil's going to be in the details that we can all work together to keep pushing this along. So thank you. Give me hope for 2022.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zepon. Oh, we can't hear you.
I had to find the mouse there. Well, I wanted to say that I'm really excited that we're going to be addressing this today on day one and that I get to vote to support this on day one and keep moving it forward. This has been a major issue for the last month and month, and I appreciate you all taking the time and doing a lot of the legwork to get us to this point. And I know that, as I was knocking on doors and hearing from people in the community, they want action now. And I think this is a way for us to show them that we're hearing them and we're addressing the needs in our community, what people are telling us, and that we're ready to take the next step. And I'm excited for that next step and excited to be addressing these issues in our community and hope to keep pushing it along and getting those dollars out to people as quickly as possible.
Thank you. All right, there's no other comment. I'm going to do my first roll call of the new year. And if you haven't noticed before, I try to do it by seniority first and then by alphabet after that. So that's what it is. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Yay, I'm not the last one now.
Yep. Councilmember Bingo.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepon.
I'm used to being last, so I'm here.
All right, great. That passes seven to zero. And again, I just want to thank everybody who worked so hard, including our council staff and including our partners in the administration and our community members. All of these substantive project ideas came from the community. And the council did a first screen on it and then discussed them in detail at meetings, even though not everyone could be at each meeting. And we're on our way. Next step is we have to develop the RFPs and then get these dollars under contract and out the door. And we will continue to come forward with future rounds of funding as we are able to vet them and bring them forward to council. With that, let's go on to the next item.
Resolution 2022-2, establishing a year-long 30 mile per hour speed limit along High Drive after the expiration of a two-year pilot project.
And we don't have anybody that signed up for this. Unless Deb Elzinga did. I think she accidentally signed up for this instead of the housing. But I don't believe we have any community comment on this, even though we've had plenty of community comment in the past on this issue. So essentially, just by background, we had a lot of speeding on there and people wanting to cross the street into the parkland and run and ride bikes and walk. And so we had two years of lower speed limit to see how that worked. And people frankly didn't comply. And the neighborhood council, which had asked us for the 20 miles per hour, changed their mind and said they wanted to go to 30 miles an hour. And so we're going to do that by this resolution, and there'd be new signs that will come up probably in the next month, assuming it passes. But is there any council commentary? Councilmember?
Deb is still on the line?
Oh. Deb, if you're still on the line?
She just hung up.
Okay, nope, she hung up. All right. Councilmember Kinnear.
I just wanted to add that essentially what you said earlier, which is, the going back to 30 miles an hour is not going to mean people are going to go 30 miles an hour. It's still a heavily used corridor by pedestrians, cyclists and cars. So hopefully, we can get something passed legislatively by the state that will allow us to track the speed and make sure people who are going over 30 miles an hour would be ticketed because it's a brand-new street. It's been repaved. And I was telling somebody today, it's got all these really nice turns and it's smooth, and the temptation is to go fast because it's fun. And that's not what we want there. So I'm hopeful the legislature will pass something that will help us keep speeders in check and make it safe for everybody.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilman Kinnear for bringing this forward. I think after we approved the original pilot, I got quite a few comments, mostly opposed, and 99.9% of them were related to High Drive. And so I think that that's been the only real area of the pilot that has had some consternation. So I think it makes sense to go back, especially with the data that was presented by our Streets Department regarding the speeds and what percentage were actually not compliant and how it actually creates a bit of an even further unsafe situation because of how many folks are not following the 20 that it was reduced to. So it makes a lot of sense to go back to 30. And as Councilman Kinnear said, there's probably some other ways that this can be slowed if need be, including some traffic calming or some other ideas with speed displays and things like that. So anyway, I will be voting yes tonight.
All right. Any other council commentary? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingo.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepon.
Aye.
All right, and that passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2022-3, setting hearing before the City Council for February 7, 2022, for the vacation of various rights and ways in the plot of North Minnehaha as requested by LB Stone Properties.
All right, and this resolution is just setting the hearing, and we'll have more details at the actual hearing. But it's a section between Frey and Green Street in northeast Spokane where the property has been platted, but essentially hasn't been developed into streets and houses. And we're looking at putting in a business park there. There's no community comment. Is there any council commentary? All right, not seeing any. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingo.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepon.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero as well. Next resolution.
Resolution 2022-4, setting hearing before the City Council for February 7, 2022, for the vacation of the alley between Pacific and Second from Sherman to Sheridan as requested by Bob Cook.
All right, and again, this is just an alleyway on, I'll call it central east Spokane. And there's no community comment. Is there any council commentary? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Wilkerson. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Cathcart.
That's okay. Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingo.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepon.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2022-5, sole-source resolution declaring Hydromax USA as a sole-source provider for the condition assessment of 2.2 miles, 2.2 miles of pipeline for the city water departments of Anna Transmission Main and authorizing the city to enter into a contract not to exceed $100,000, including tax if applicable.
All right, there's no community comment. Any council commentary? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingo.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepon.
Aye.
All right, that also passes seven to zero. Next resolution.
Resolution 2022-6, approving settlement agreement and general release of all claims of Neil Johnson for $108,396.48 agreed to by the parties.
Again, there's no community comment. This is a property damage case that the city resolved through negotiation. Any council commentary? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingo. Councilmembers Zepon.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance.
Ordinance C 35924, granting Yellowstone Pipeline Company, a corporation chartered in the state of Delaware, the non-exclusive right, privilege and authority and franchise to construct, operate, maintain, remove, replace and repair existing pipeline facilities together with equipment and appurtenances thereto for the transportation of petroleum products and byproducts in the public right-of-way within and through the city of Spokane, Spokane County, Washington, tabled during the May 3, 2021 legislative session.
All right, this is a renewal of a franchise for a liquid oil pipeline. And it actually expired, I believe they told us, 2005, and it's been in negotiation since then. And there's now a final version for consideration by council. There is no community comment. Any council commentary? I'm going to go with Councilmember Cathcart first since he's the sponsor, and then Councilmember Kinnear. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this has been floating on and off our agenda for about a year, maybe a little longer. And I think it's, over that time, there's been some improvements and it's gotten better. So really glad that we're taking this up and hopefully we'll pass this this evening. I think there's obviously some big improvements over the current situation, notably some additional dollars for the annual franchise fee and things like that. But I think the most important piece of this is the fact that once this is done, Phillips 766 is going to be able to upgrade that pipeline and make it safer and hopefully make it more secure. So I think for that reason, it's definitely worthy of support tonight. I will be supporting it and appreciate your consideration.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge Tim Zamblin, who worked on this, has worked on this for at least, I would say, a year and a half now and received a lot of input from both Council President and me on improvements. I have a lot of angst over this because of the pipeline accident that did happen in Bellingham when two children were killed in that. And no pipeline is going to be absolutely bulletproof. It does go under our river. It is our drinking water. That said, right now, we have no protection whatsoever. And it concerns me that if something were to happen right now, we'd have no recourse. I want to make sure that the community is safe, as safe as possible, given that there's a pipeline going under our river. We're also hamstrung by the fact that this is a federal and a state regulation that we need to accommodate. We also get the opportunity, if we approve this, with Tim's help, going forward with further improvements, not only to this agreement but to safety precautions. No pipeline is going to be 100% secure. And so we're going to have to hedge our bets a little bit, cross our fingers and make sure that it's as safe as possible and give Tim room to continue to negotiate for higher insurance and more safety precautions. I will be supporting this tonight with reservations. So, thank you.
Any other council commentary? All right, well, I'm just going to comment briefly because this is an issue I've cared about, and I'm going to be opposing it, but understand that it will probably pass. I've been a student of oil pipeline accidents and catastrophes across the country for a few decades and I've been convinced that pipelines are the safest way to transport oil. If you are going to transport liquid petroleum, oil. If you are going to transport liquid petroleum, pipelines are the safest, but only if you do everything you can to make sure that they are safe. And since they are, they transport a very pricey commodity, you can charge enough money to transport it, to pay for the safety things. The issue with this one, Yellowstone has been very pleasant to deal with. I've had great conversations with them and Phillips 66 and their representatives. We've gotten along very well. We've just disagreed on one thing, and that is it's undisputed that if there was a major oil spill into the river and our drinking water aquifer, it would cost hundreds of millions of dollars to remediate. And Yellowstone Pipeline does not have enough assets to pay for that. And under this agreement, they would have insurance of $100 million, which would be inadequate to pay for it, which would leave it to the city of Spokane to pay for it. So my challenge on this all along has been there's not enough insurance or assets to protect us in the small chance of a catastrophe. And I've lived through a similar catastrophe someplace else and saw what the results of that were, and understand that even though large oil companies, international oil companies, control pipeline companies, because of laws of limited liability of owners of shares of a company like Yellowstone that doesn't have enough assets, they're not on the hook necessarily if there is a catastrophe. And so we're at risk. So I can't vote for it now, but I am impressed with the work of Assistant City Attorney Tim Zamblin in negotiating probably one of the best franchise agreements in the state of Washington. So it is just a huge improvement over what it is. It's just not where it needs to be. And I'm going to continue to work with our staff and legal assistants to figure out if we can find a way to hold the owners of the pipeline companies or the operators financially responsible in that, again, very small but horrible catastrophe scenario. So I'm not done with my work on it. But, and again, huge improvement over what it's been, and nothing bad to say about Yellowstone Pipeline or Phillips 66 for the operators. It's just that I need them to step up like we would expect anyone else and to be able to fully cover any damages that they would cause the city of Spokane and our residents if they somehow destroy our sole source drinking water aquifer. Hope that never comes true, but let's go to a roll call. Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and no. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bingle.
Aye.
Councilmembers Zepon.
Aye.
Okay. That passes six to one. And that leaves us with first reading ordinance.
Ordinance C36137 relating to establishing a new penalty for violations of the Building Code and amending the penalty schedule building construction found in Section 1.05.150 of the Spokane municipal code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
And there's no requested community comment on it. Just a reminder to people that last year, we started allowing people to comment on first reading so that they could give us input before the night of the vote. So people can sign up for that if they like. That brings us to the end of our legislative agenda. That leaves us open forum. I have one speaker, Anwar Peace, but I do need to comment that one of our most frequent open forum speakers, Nicolette Occultree, isn't speaking today because she is now Councilmember Bingle's Legislative Assistant, and he picked a very good person who is so knowledgeable as anyone who's listened to our meetings and is so on top of every detail. So we're, we welcome Nicolette to council staff and bid her goodbye from open forum comments. But Mr. Peace, are you there? Hit star three if you want to, if you're there. All right. Anwar, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, council. On December 30th, the Spokane Police Department launched a condemnate, commend, comm, sorry, a praise page on their website where people can give praises to officers in dealing with their normal duties. This is kind of interesting because in 2016, that same kind of webpage for police complaints with redacted internal affairs reports was removed by the police department. In 2018, the council tried to put those IA reports back online with ordinance C35633, which this ordinance was indefinitely deferred due to the police chief's opposition to it. The police chief said about the following, about this ordinance, "Our employees are the most valuable asset. Feel that posting these kinds of AI reports is humiliating and it's embarrassing. It tarnishes the reputation of not only the officers, but also the police department." Well, this statement is somewhat misleading because the facts show that the yearly community input that the department receives is about 70% of praises and 30% of complaints. Also, the majority of those complaints are in fact internal complaints, which means officers are making complaints on fellow officers more than the public is making complaints. Because last year's police ombudsman's special reports, a lot of those were based on internal complaints. In fact, last year, an internal complaint was made by the police chief himself against one of his own officers for a jaywalking arrest of myself in April. The chief also had those jaywalking charges dropped on me as well. As well, he set up a mediation meeting between me and that officer. Because the citizens have shared with me emails of public records that they've gotten from downtown officers, I now know that my arrests and others arrested in Spokane have been based on political motivation. Over the past few several months, activists have testified about their lack of responsiveness of public records with the police. And in November, it was released that the city council is working on a new law, which I eagerly look forward to seeing. We, as a community, have watched this department become its own little magical fiefdom where standard HR standard practices nor budgetary processes take place like other police agencies. It's time that the city council bring in this police department. If they're going to put a page up for praises, we also, as a public, deserve to see what kind of complaints they're getting. Thank you for your time. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Anwar. And that brings us to the end of our first meeting of 2022. Thank you, everybody. And thank you to our new council members especially. And please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We're adjourned.